We'll call the Newport City Council meeting to order from Monday, May 1st, 2017, 6:30 PM. City Council Room. All members of the council are present, with the exception of Mr. Merriman. Others include James Johnson, Hethmark Treasurer, and Laura Dogan, our city manager. The next item is the approval of the minutes of April 17th, 2017. And one correction made already?
It's already been made.
Other than that, anything else on the minutes? Then we need a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of April 17th, 2017, with the single noted error that has been corrected.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
Sure can.
Made and seconded. Oh, Mr. Merriman is now present. Made and seconded. Any discussion? Then all those in favor say aye. Aye. Close. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next item is comments by members of the public, or anything which is not on the agenda? Yes?
I'll make this short, I hope. And this is, the first part is my opinion, and the second part, I have a question that I want to ask. First, in my opinion, that City of Newport unanimously took it among themselves to involve the City of Newport in the EB5 program, a program which has per a lawsuit alleging the program was fraud and stated and started in 2008 in this area. It is also proven to be fraud nationally. Because of this, Newport has lost its grand list monies by demolishing approximately one-third of Newport City proper, thus adversely creating a tax burden on the Newport City taxpayers. This does not include the BioMed bonus slash boner property. My question, has the City and/or does the City believe that they may have a civil charge that could be filed with the Federal Securities and Exchange Commission concerning the fraud money being used to buy property in the City and then demolish same? And I understand there is a deadline for this filing, if it's going to be done. Or if it's not going to be done, then there's no worry about the deadline. I thank you.
Thank you.
Which are the green slots, Mr. Mayor?
You can.
Okay. So, we don't know the impact of the grand list yet. That's, we're going to know more about that by the end of the summer. There is a possibility that that property use grand list may have increased in value. So, we just don't know that yet. I did get a letter from the receiver today that was a blanket letter that I think was sent to all interested parties, letting them know of the settlement and to let him know if there was any objection. I'm gonna, I do plan to run that by our city attorney. At this point, I have no reason to believe that we would object to that. We are not a party to the case. The City never invested any dollars into the project, so we're not out any actual dollars. In terms of whether or not we would have a chance of being involved in some sort of civil or criminal litigation, that's a good question. It has been asked by others, and it's good to revisit that every so often. The short answer is no. We do not believe that we would have any grounds to file any lawsuit. In part because the primary, the priority of that particular situation is the people who were wronged, and that would be the investors and the people who applied for their visas. As far as the court system goes, that, those are the, I don't know if the right word is victims, but those are the people that they would want to see corrected. If we were to file a lawsuit, I don't know how we would tabulate any loss that we have received, because again, we have not invested any actual dollars. What the City invested, as I understand, was moral support. That you had an opportunity. The town plan, if you look at our town plan, it surrounds the potential impacts of not only the ANC Bio plant, but the potential that this had, as well as the possible conference center. So, if anything, we probably, I mean, there's no doubt that we need to redo our town plan, or our city plan, rather. But again, how do you, how do you attribute actual dollars? And how do you articulate a wrong that the court could fix? And that's, that's the best I can, any comments or questions?
Mrs. Shanet?
Also, to answer Mr. McNeil, he mentioned that it was a burden to the City. However, I'm under the understanding, and either Mr. Johnson or Ms. Dogan can correct me on it, but J Corporation, or the receivership, is paying taxes on those properties, so we're not losing anything. They are up to date, as far as I know, as far as taxes. The only time that we would really have a stake in that matter is if they stop paying the taxes, and then we could go after them for the taxes. But they're up to date, and so we're all right.
That's, that's correct. You're still going for taxes, you're still paying. Grand list has not changed on the property.
And, you know, and as a taxpayer, now that, will that be broken down in the new tax schedule that's coming out? Because it's always stated that we're going to get a raise in taxes. And be able to show exactly why we're getting a raise in taxes, and where's, where the, where the money is, has to be going to to, you know, for those taxes to work, and things of this sort. Are the people going to be notified? Or are we going to be, you know, knowledgeable about how that's going to work?
You should get a list of each property in the City, and what the new appraisal is, like you did last time. Every property have a new appraisal?
Yeah.
And everyone will be listed in the book, I'm sure, just like it was last time.
But the new, new properties, but the property that's torn down, the appraisal is going to be the same, because there's no new appraisal. There's nothing there to appraise, so.
We don't know, we don't know what the appraisal.
I understand that if they were still there, they would be appraised the same way as the new appraisals, and that would be, and right now, it's a loss to the City, because there's nothing there. So, here again.
We don't know that.
We don't know that.
We don't know that, Mr. McNeil. We're really not going to know until the appraisal is done. There is a possibility that it's actually worth more now, because the debris is removed and it's ready for build.
Probably worth more than it was if the building's there.
It could be, and then, you know, there's infrastructure and grants available, so there's a lot of variables. Your questions are very valid, but I can't give you any, any concrete response at this particular time.
Another thing with this property, all the hazardous lead, asbestos was all removed, which is a positive. And then you've mentioned the bonus site, or ANC Bio, that property. The big positive that's up there now is the entire stormwater system was put in that's required by Act 250, so any future development won't have to have that expense that was paid for by JP. Or whoever, whoever paid for it. But the whole stormwater system that was never on that property is now installed, the utility's on the ground. So, that's an improvement, even though the other thing didn't come to fruition. That makes it much more marketable for a potential developer to come in or manufacturing up there. Because as we all know, the new permit requirements all require complex stormwater systems, and that now has it up there. And that's a big positive.
And also, those properties are appraised, so you will see that when that report comes out.
Yes.
If I may, just one more here. We sold the road that went up there to J. Now, are we going to, we're buying that back now? Is that going to be back for the City? Or is that going to be a private drive going up there, or what?
It belongs to whoever, belongs to the receiver.
Whoever gets the property, they will own that road. Just a second, no, just second, this gentleman first. And I've got to go into what I hear.
Alright.
Mr. Mayor, wasn't there a stipulation in that hole in the ground over there that by a certain date in this year of 2017, if something wasn't done by it, it was going to be turned into a green space or something?
They have a contingency plan in the Act 250 permit. My understanding, and I think I heard this from Dave Snedeker at NVDA, is that that's been mooted out because of the circumstances. If that was in there, if that was left in there, that would be another obstacle that a potential developer would have to overcome. And that could be very expensive if, if whomever took responsibility of filling it in then had to empty it out in order to develop it. So, that was the logic behind that.
Right, that was mooted, is from my understanding.
So, that road given to the developer, it wasn't sold?
No, it was turned over.
No.
No. Well, just like, the road, the, the bonus road was turned over to the developer, because they were going to start maintaining it.
But they already owned down to a certain part where the City's right-of-way was, and then we handed over the rest of it, the boughs. Because I was on the council letter, we did that.
Right, right.
So, they now have that entire driveway from Glen Road, not Glen Road, Lake Road all the way up.
Running away with probably only thirty, forty feet.
Right.
Yes.
If I may.
No, I would underestimate that, and it was well over thirty, forty feet. It was right-of-way.
Okay. One more, Brian.
Okay, now, if there's a, if there's a timeline on filing civilly with the commission and stuff like this, and we've got to wait until we find out whether we need to or not, we're not going to be able to get in on that filing date, are we? Or can we ask for an extension, or is it going to be just long?
I don't think we're going to need to. It's pretty timely, I just got it today. So, I'm not, I'm not worried that we're going to be outside of any timelines that are available to us.
Okay, anything else, then we'll move on. Next item, Green Lantern Solar Net Metering Contract Recommendation. Laura?
So, last week, or rather, at our last meeting, I had an inkling from our attorney that they might recommend that we not engage in that contract at this time. And since then, I've provided the council with a memo describing why they believe it's not a good time for us to enter into that net metering contract. The bottom line from their perspective is that the Public Service Board has undertaken to substantially revise the net metering rules. That's in response to rapid growth of the program. So, right now, it's sort of an unknown about what the oversight is going to be for net metering contracts. Given that, and given that the contract that was presented to us was a little vague on the details, our city attorney has recommended that the timing is not right for us to enter into this particular contract. And I wanted to just bring that before the council tonight. And I've got to get back to Green Lantern, which I could do tomorrow once I know what the council's wishes are.
Questions from anyone on the council?
We're only allowed to purchase a set amount of kilowatts from them. And I know that they have mentioned, if I remember correctly, something like, was it 900,000?
I, I thought it was in the 500 range. And we have a net metering agreement with Great Bay Hydra. So, some of our total allotment that we're allowed is already taken up by them. And because we don't know what the next rules are going to be, if there's going to be a cap on that, it's another reason for stalling our agreement on that.
Mr. Mayor, is the agreement proposed by Green Lantern substantially similar to the one that you already have entered into with Great Bay?
Yes, it's, it's similar to that, except there's no details, because they don't know what the rules are going to be.
Okay, so that, so it's, it's not that they're doing anything differently, it's just that there's this uncertainty in the, yes?
Yes, in the rules, which is, which is causing some uncertainty in the details of the contract.
Okay, so if the rules have remained the same, the recommendation would have been different?
Very possibly, as long as the contract had clear delineation of what the terms would be.
Right. And also, the rules are changing, and we haven't made a contract with the Green Lantern Company. But with Great Bay, that's pre-existing, and that will not change, no matter how the rules change now.
I understood that, but thank you for your information.
Yeah, okay. So, basically, he's recommending that we do not enter into a contract?
Not at this time. They might be able to reapproach, to approach it. I don't have a timeline of when the Public Service Board may finalize their, their new rules. So, it could be a while before we hear from this company again.
Okay. So, we'll just leave it at status quo? Because the motion was to have you research it the last time. Is that okay with everyone, just leave it at a status quo?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask? I'm probably one of the old people around still, and stuff like this. My hearing is not as good as it used to be. And when you talk on a table up there, it's, it's not very clear, and it's hard to understand what you're talking about. And then we, if we have comments or any questions, it's hard to be able to get to those. So, I'm just wondering if sometimes you could put mics up there so it, so there could be a possibility of, you know, hearing a little bit better and tell us better what's going on.
Okay, moving on. The next item is website update.
So, the website update is basically that there is not an update for tonight. I had submitted a proposal to the City, I think, two meetings ago, and have decided that I'm going to pull that back one more meeting. We've got another proposal to look at this coming Friday that could be a little more encompassing. So, I, I didn't want you to think that I was overlooking the website, considering it had been on for the past two agendas. The update is, I'm going to buy a little bit of time and do one more level of research before I bring it back to the board.
Okay, any questions for the city manager on that? No? Okay. Next item is the centennial update.
All right. This is exciting, I hope. So, the centennial update, the Centennial Committee, which is comprised of a lot of people, which I'll get to, has been diligently meeting every month since August. And the goal of that, of course, is to put together a nice, large celebration, because after all, it is the centennial celebration. The donation from the Palmero family has solidified the committee's efforts. And as you can imagine, steam has picked up, would that be fair to say? So, I wanted to give folks kind of an overview at this point, and I intend to keep it on the agenda, because stuff is starting to happen, and believe it or not, it's only 14 months away. Is that possible? So, this is what folks can expect so far. Steve Edgerley is spearheading a large parade. He's going to secure the parade marchers, the floats, and the marching bands. So, if anyone's interested in having a float in the parade, please contact him, and you can reach him right through our main office. Lori Grimm has been actively working to coordinate community suppers. And she's got a great menu, including chicken pot pie, ham and beans, and barbecue. She's also touched base with some large employers in the area to see if they will allow community tours of their factories, including Built by Newport and Columbia, and trying to get in touch with revision. And hopefully, that'll be something that will, will be enjoyable. And she's contacted somebody local who knows the world of miniature trains. And we're optimistic that she'll be able to have a, make arrangements to pull together a miniature train display. Bradley and Diana Stockwell have put together a beautiful historical video that will be available for public view. And they showed it to the community during the last session, and it was received very well. And we had some discerning opinions in the audience, and that was nice. Roger Carte's been working with Robin Coulter at Community National Bank, and with the Rotary, and with Decca at the high school. They've pulled together a mailing list so that we can send letters to businesses, letting them know that this event's taking place. And if they'd like to submit a float or make a donation, they have a way to do that. He's also talked to Tim Byrne, who works at the high school and is a stained glass artist. And Tim is willing to make some sort of commemorative stained glass window. We're going to learn more about that hopefully at our next meeting. Paul Manette's working on a centennial book, and that's going to be based on the one from 1968 with historical articles and photos. And that book also has an opportunity for the public to buy ads and make personal contributions. And we've got the last book, do you have that in your, right there?
This one's from 1968.
Right, so we're going to recreate that, update it, and it's going to be the same level of quality. And that's something that we're very excited about. And Mr. Shanet is creating a coin and a stamp to commemorate the centennial. I don't, I don't need to put you on the spot, but we're very excited about that as well. Carol Nicholson at the Goodrich Library, Peggy Gibson at the Old Stone House, and the Member Making Arts Collaborative will all be hosting relevant displays during the week. And Carol has secured Alan Yale as a speaker, who's going to give lectures on, on the history of the area. We've got water skiers and plane rides. Newport Reck is going to host the opportunity to build a time capsule, a street dance, and a disc golf tournament. We're going to have horseshoes and cars of yesteryear. And we're working on getting lumberjacks. We aren't quite there yet, but they're on our horizon. Last week, we met with the Revolutionary War reactors, and they're, we got very excited. I actually have some handouts that they provided. They are going to be stationed at Crowdy Beach, which is the perfect place, because it's a natural amphitheater. They're going to come into the community on Friday. We're going to try and get one of our dinners to be down at Crowdy Beach, so when they come in, we'll, we'll have dinner waiting for them. And they're going to stay through Sunday. And this is going to end up being a flagship event with between 250 and 300 reenactors. And they brought me this newspaper, which was, I think this one took place in.
Lake George, isn't it?
I think it was, maybe that's safe.
Yeah, it's the one they have every year.
And so, they are, I'll leave, or I'll pass this around this way, and the audience might enjoy looking at that. They are going to have between 250 and 300 reenactors. They're going to have the British encampment, a French encampment, the settlers, and the natives. They're going to do some land battles, and they're going to do some water battles, bringing between 10 and 12 watercraft and cannons. Everybody loves cannons. We're going to contact the schools to let them know that this opportunity exists for their students. And we're going to, I know that Mr. Stockwell has agreed to film the events, but there are other photographers that might enjoy this. We think that if we can coordinate all the photographers, including drones, although the drones will have to be careful so that they don't get caught up in any fire. But we'd like all the photographers who are interested in this to, to let us know, so that we can coordinate where they'll be located. Because there's going to be a lot to capture here with, with the redcoats being near the tennis courts, the bluecoats being at the soccer field, the settlers being down on the other field, and the natives coming up through the woods.
Also, Roger, a green dude to that.
That is correct.
And a naval dude.
That's right. It's, I, I don't think Newport has seen something like this before, which is why I want to start building up, because our goal is to get people out there to enjoy it and to learn from it, to have fun. And I can't stress the natural amphitheater, and give Jim credit for that, because people are going to be able to be seated around the banks and see everything. And so, if anybody is interested in filming it, let us know. Get on the list, so as it draws closer, we can have people stationed in various places. And we have the drones high enough so that they don't get caught up.
You want to get shot at, was going?
That's right. So, the other thing you're going to notice is that the City's going to, the public works is going to start to polish and shine our main thoroughfare, our parks and our streets. We want to do some planting this year, so it takes hold in time for next year. So, you're going to see the main street sidewalks are going to be bricked. The Causeway is going to get some tender loving care, including the islands, which are going to enjoy plantings. Public Works is going to pull out the pavement, and we're going to start to fill that in with shrubs, tulips, and other things that can withstand the elements, not get driven on.
And hot, dry leather.
And hot, dry leather. We're also going to do the islands by little G's. So, you'll see some work on that. And we're working with Robert Goslin at Spades the Florist, who has given us something we, we can't turn away from in terms of cost and expenses. We're going to also landscape around the municipal building. And mostly, what we're doing is taking existing perennials down there and going to wing them around. So, we'll, we'll do that in a very cost-effective way. And if our budget allows, we may be able to plant some trees between the Causeway, I mean, on the Causeway, between the sidewalk and the bike path, which apparently there were beautiful trees, beautiful line of trees many, many years ago.
There was a whole row of elm trees up through there.
So, if there's a way that we can, that our budget will allow us to recreate that, we'd like to do that. And lastly, the next meeting is scheduled for Monday, May 15th. We've been meeting just before council meetings. It's only an hour, five to six. So, if there are people out there who want to get involved, this would be a good meeting to come to. Things are going to really pick up. And the meeting in June is going to be an extra long one, because we're really going to hunker into the details. So, I don't know when that meeting in June is going to be scheduled yet, but it's about a month afterwards. And I just want to acknowledge all the people that have come out to bring the energy into this that we've, that we've come to experience so far. We expect that this event's going to be worthwhile, and it's going to be high quality. We've got so many people coming out. I've got a list of some of them, and I, I don't want to omit anybody. So, if, if your name's not included, it's not intentional. And I'm going to keep this on council agendas. But of course, Jim Johnson, Steve Edgerley, Roger Carte, Lori Grimm, Robin Coulter, Mr. Wilson, Bradley and Diana Stockwell. And there was a gentleman at the last meeting whose first name was Tim, and I did not get his last name. Tall, and I think it begins with an S-H, so I've got his phone number, but not his name. Steve Barrett came to find out if there was something at Newport, I think it's Newport Center, Newport Town. So, they're interested in either doing a float or, or supporting it with some sort of money. James Marion, who's going to be involved in one of the community dinners. Chicken pot pie?
Chicken pot pie, yeah.
Carol Nicholson, Paul Manette, Dennis Shanet. And I'm certain that there are others. And we've had representation from the Rotary. We've had representation, as I mentioned, from Community National Bank and Columbia Forest Products. Have I missed anybody that you can think of off the bat?
I don't think I can think of anyone.
Okay. So, I've got another picture. And this was when the reenactors did the Plains of Avery Day a few years ago, and they had 2,500 reenactors, and they had about 10,000 spectators. And they recreate these battles, and they know their stuff. All I can say is, if you come in and engage them in conversation, you better know your stuff.
We met with them for a couple hours, and the people in charge had it all planned out, worked out, what was going to happen already. They love the spot over there, it's a natural place to have it.
Yeah. Yep, so we've got a little more planning to do. But I, I think it's going to be a very nice reflection on the community.
If anybody's got any ideas, want to get involved, this is a one-in-a-lifetime chance right here. So, we're going to, we're going to do it upright. Hopefully, it'll be a great success.
Yeah. Yep, so there's more to come. But thank you, I just wanted to keep folks to know.
Thank you.
Yes, I will.
Any questions from anyone?
What are the dates of the Centennial celebrations?
It's 2018, and I believe the Friday, the last Friday in June, I believe, is the twenty-ninth. And it's gonna go through July fourth, which is a Wednesday. So we've got, this is a framework of the schedule. And because we understand now the magnitude of the Revolutionary War reenactors, which are gonna come Friday and stay through Sunday, we may need to adjust a few things on the schedule so that people have an opportunity to enjoy the reenactors and not miss out on some other things. So I think the next meeting will make some minor adjustments to the schedule, and I think things are gonna take off. I mean, we only have fourteen meetings before this thing, so we're feeling a little excited.
We'll have the normal fireworks on the forest. Plan to be a little bit larger than they normally are, that's the plan. And we probably will have a small fireworks display on March fifth, which is the actual date the city was founded. So we're gonna have fireworks that day, or that weekend with an actual date. And we'll do it again in July, and we'll have the celebration.
So, that's my update, thank you.
Mr. Chenet. Did we receive a check?
Not yet.
Okay. When we do, there'll be a separate budget item, which will show incoming and whatever outgoing.
Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you.
And remember, we have twenty-five thousand, that's budgeted in this year's budget as well.
That's one hundred and seven thousand.
Yep.
And hopefully we'll have twenty-five thousand budgeted next year.
Okay.
Because it's gonna be, it'll probably take all of that that we got planned.
All right.
They'll be worth it.
Thank you for the update?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Look forward to all the excitement. Next item, Mr. Johnson, new business.
Yeah, I've got a... Need a catering permit that needs council approval, doesn't need a signature, just needs mine, but I need a motion to approve it. Eden Ice Siders doing a fundraiser for Ramon Symphony Orchestra, and it's gonna be at Spades to Florist on Elm Street. They do this every year, the wine and cheese, so I just need a motion to approve. Accept that, second it.
I'll make that motion.
So motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded for the outside catering permit? Any discussion on that? Having none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, eyes have it, motion carries.
The other thing I got is an outside consumption permit from the American Legion. It got sent in, but they didn't sign it, so we gotta do it again. They paid the money, so we just needed an approval on that, everybody to sign at the appropriate spot. So we'll need a motion on that too.
Did you say you need a motion on that as well?
No. No. I said it.
Yeah.
Could you sign it?
You're signing that one.
You made your motion to approve. Bye bye.
Just can't get enough of those motions.
Yeah. The other thing I got, Mr. Mayor, is I got a application for Niles Trust Funds. If he does meet the qualifications, she's hit before, I can patch that down, if anybody can see who it is. Everybody's not familiar with the Niles Fund, that's a fund set up years ago to help people who have a hard time paying taxes, water bills, medical bills, that type of thing. You have to be over sixty years old, you have to be a resident of the city. And you can get it twice in a five-year period and a limited four hundred dollars each time. So, we have people playing to that quickstep. And they can only give out the interest on the original amount, you can't dip into the principal, so.
So, we would need a motion to approve the Niles Fund request.
We'll make that motion, approve it?
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded, discussion? Do all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Close, eyes have, motion carries.
Yep.
Any other new business?
Nope.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I've got one thing. I've been looking at it for about a year now. The sneakers on over the wires over on Prospect Street. In the past, city manager would call the co-op, and they would come and cut them down. Or we'd put the four-way stop in, go east two houses, you can't miss them, they've been up there for about a year. And it doesn't look pretty. That's all.
That's all?
Yes, actually, I have a couple things. When I came in the building this evening, I noticed that there's nobody in the gym, where there's usually a large number of people playing basketball. And then I noticed there's a sign on the door that said, "Closed to the public." What's up with that?
We had some people come in here and analyze the gym. And they were caught red-handed. And we've been struggling with a group of users who have been abusing the gym for about nine months. And we've talked to them, we've had police intervention. We've had a number of failed attempts to try to rehabilitate them and try to see things from a different perspective. And they were caught red-handed with paint cans, spray painting, before the balcony, that was it. And we made the executive decision to shut it down at this time of year to convey to these users how serious their issues are, and it's a really good time of year to be outside playing. So we had to, we had to do something, we could not continue with this. They have been throwing balls into the screens. Those screens are up to protect the windows, and they seem to make a game out of breaking the screens. If you look at them, you see there's balls indentation, and then the screens give way. We've had to have those rebuilt, oh, probably every three weeks. And we need to take a stronger stand.
With that, but this evening must be the basketball is over with. The adult league is probably over, and that's why there's no one there tonight. That usually ends right around that.
Yeah, that's done.
The adult, that's done, the adult league is done right now, and so.
So the only thing that's not allowed is open gym, and that means when, when people come in without a reservation. So we had to work with them.
Okay.
Do you have something else?
Yes, but I think there's questions.
Yes.
Well, the question I got about that then, so everybody else has to suffer whether they wanna use it on the open door policy. And you say you had to take strong, and the police didn't do anything about it. Once again, what's wrong with notice against trespassers that can be served on these people, and they can be banned from here for a year or longer?
We're talking youth?
It doesn't matter. Because if you wanna, if you wanna teach the youth, then start teaching them at the very beginning.
And we are. And the police were involved, so, I mean, that's a conclusion that was jumped. And if people wanna use the gym, all they have to do is make a reservation.
I think, I think, I think the questions have been answered, you know? We could talk about this all evening, but it's not penal, it's penalizing just people walking in. But you can make a reservation. So if I'm a group of kids and I wanna use the gym at five o'clock on a Monday night, I just have to sign up. These were, these group of kids were just walking in.
What stops them from walking in the door behind them then?
What'd you say?
What stops the other ones from walking in the door behind them?
I don't know what you mean.
If the gym's open, a group of kids wanna use it, the gym's open to that group, what stops the other kids from coming in?
Right. You know, we have to monitor, we have to take responsibility. We can't let these, we can't let a few people take away the fun for everybody. The problem is, it's out of control, and we have to send a message.
Then ban them.
We are.
No, you closed it to everybody.
No, we didn't.
It's not closed, sir, it's not closed to everybody. All you have to do is sign up to use the gym, and that's not hard to sign up. It's not hard to sign up.
If somebody reserves it, signs their name on there, and they let people in there that's not a part of the group using it, then they're responsible.
Right. Okay.
So I don't think that they let people in, that shouldn't be in.
Okay. Any other?
No.
No other new business?
Is this old business, or is that, is that coming up?
What?
Old business.
Old business is for the city council.
Where are you guys? You're not the council?
This is the council, but new and old business is really for the council members. If you have something to bring up, it's under public comment.
Yeah, well, I have something to bring up.
Well, let me, let me finish with the rest of the council first.
All right.
Mr. Chenet, did you have anything new, anything?
No, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, old business.
No.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes. Our sign's at the foot of East Main. I know the policy's been changed in previous councils, and that we would get emails telling us what was going on. Well, I've received two emails, and there's been five signs put up over the weekend. One of them's been up there for a week and a half advertising a business. I think we need to slow down when we're over in that area. If you hit your red light, look left and right down what's in there, and then, they're not supposed to be there, take them down. Or let the council know that, yes, they have permission to have it up, and they'll take it down. But it's already started, and I'll harp on someone. That's all.
Anything?
No, thank you.
Okay. Did you have something, sir, 'cause you weren't here for the public comment? Did you have something you'd like to?
Yeah, I'd like to address how come the police department won't enforce the stopping pedestrians, yielding pedestrians on the car park. I've talked to the city police, the city manager, and everybody, and they won't do it. They won't even stop people or give them tickets. And the ticket's a hundred something dollars and two points. And the police chief said that it takes too much, it's too much paperwork, it takes some time. I said, "Well, hire somebody else, if you got ten thousand in fines a day, you can afford to pay somebody a couple hundred dollars to work." And then lately, this bicycle's riding on the damn sidewalk, it about wiped me out like four times now. And bicycles aren't supposed to be allowed on the sidewalk. Pretty sure it's the law. And I don't like it. I can't hardly see, for one thing. I mean, these kids are going down through there about twenty-five miles an hour, and they, they're just about wiping me out like four times already in the last week. And I think the police should put a notice in the paper or something, on the radio, and tell them they're not supposed to be on the sidewalk with a bicycle. And that's right here on Main Street. They're supposed to ride on the side of the road. Like all them bikers with helmets, they riding the road, you don't ride on the sidewalk. And I would like somebody to do something about it. That's all I had to say right now.
Okay, thank you. You were here, Brian, during public comment. Usually, new and old business is for the city council. The public comment period is for the public to bring up issues.
Yeah, the old business, I just, I didn't know that. Your Western Avenue, I wanted to bring up. It's a speed zone over there. If I'm on the left lane, and I'm going twenty-five miles an hour, and I hit this person on the right that's tooting his horn for me to get over because he wants to go forty miles an hour up that road. And so that sign, I've mentioned this before, that stay to the right sign for slow traffic, stay to the right should be taken down, and the twenty-five mile limit signs stay up there, and then make both those lanes twenty-five mile limits. Then you wouldn't get that because most people say, see that right lane just for slow traffic. And if I'm in the left lane, and I'm going twenty-five miles an hour, which is not slow, that's the speed limit, but they wanna go forty, then to them, it's, I'm in the wrong lane. And the police, I've mentioned this many, many times, they don't seem to wanna, if, to me, Newport can get a lot of money in tickets if they wanna get out there and do it.
That's what I see.
And coming down Mount Vernon Street, everybody thinks that that left-hand turn is a right-of-way for a person coming down straight. And if they're sitting out there, I can guarantee them at least twelve, probably twelve, fifteen tickets a day for people that don't give the right-of-way to a person that's going straight.
Will you chat with the chief?
Yep.
Thank you. All right, anything else from any of the council members then? The next meeting date, we don't need any executive sessions for the negotiations.
No.
Okay. Just wanna make sure. The next meeting date of the city council is May fifteenth, six thirty P M. Centennial planning is May fifteenth at five o'clock. We need a motion to adjourn.
So what, Mr.?
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded, discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Close. Or adjourn.